All right, thank you. All right.
I'll also take the opportunity now to note to everyone that's here because we have a good group. Meetings start at 5:30. We immediately motion to go into executive session. There's no, I wish there was, but there's no end time to executive session. When we come back out, we reconvene and we start the meeting. So, you know, in planning schedules for future meetings, I don't love this, but try to be here as close to 5:30 as you can so that you don't miss the beginning.
All right, so, and that was posted in which medias out there that your meeting starts at what time? Because a public meeting, you know, should be...
Two newspapers that are the official newspapers of the district.
And, I'm sorry, what was the starting time of the meeting?
The meetings for the last several months have been 5:30, not 7 o'clock.
All right, so if I go to the burrow...
It's 5:30, not 7.
If I go to the burrow, you know, website, and I look it up, and it says 7 o'clock, I'm mistaken?
The borough? No, the borough, the meeting is...
Well, no, I'm sorry.
The board meeting is supposed to be Friday.
The board meeting website said 7 o'clock.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, so...
When we get to it, then it'll have to be changed.
Yeah, so, I'm not giving you a hard time. I just, you know, I want to make sure that we have the full facts here. All right, thank you.
We'll look at it. If it's wrong, we'll definitely have it changed, and thank you for letting us know.
Yeah, sorry, sorry to be advantageous.
All right, so as we're filing in here, I'm just going to keep this open. If anybody wants to come up, you know, I got to give everybody a shot, and I want to give everybody a shot, and I just want to make a note of who I'm up with.
Big shout out, Sarah.
All right, so we are with, we're at John.
John.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm interested in, well, I'm a citizen of, I've been back on for 30 years, retired nurse, okay? I'm interested in access to curriculum content, particularly in view of the state and federal agendas. Is that open to discussion?
We can talk about it again. So, thanks for coming. Prior to your question, there had been at least two or three other folks that had mentioned concern over curriculum, particularly as it pertained to the health curriculum and LGBTQ-related curricular topics. So, I know that our president Scott Francis had mentioned that we will have a single-issue meeting on this topic so that we could discuss this in full. I know that the way we had been left was the governor had sent out a kind of memo saying the recent change on the health curriculum is still being kind of worked out, and we've not received any sort of direction as a Department of Education how this curriculum is going to be effectuated. So for right now, we haven't made any changes to curriculum to reflect anything that is being discussed on any news outlets about the way second graders learn, about gender, et cetera. So, we're waiting for that further direction from the Department of Education, and as soon as we receive it, then I'll have more information to share, and I'll have the whole meeting on these topics.
Okay, you just realized that I'm a Roman Catholic, there are conservative Protestants, I'm sure, and Hindus and Muslims. You sort of view this kind of emphasis on sexual content as an intrusion into personal belief systems and the way we would like to raise our children.
Oh, sure, I'm not, no, I have no problem with that. I don't think I said anything to negate that or to say that.
Well, no, I mean, but the thing is, I would expect that there would be a strong incentive to comply with the state and federal directives in order to facilitate funding, perhaps?
We will have...
Yeah, I don't know what you're getting at, but I...
We'll have a big meeting on it and to really talk through that topic in particular. I think it's very warranted, so I promise that will happen. Brian.
All right, Collins, back on the education interview. First, I would like to speak about some concerns we have regarding the potential addition of private preschool classes to the Tulsa Trail building. Right now, we have been told that there are some private interests, not employees of the school, private outside companies that are companies that will be funding to run preschool classes in the Tulsa Trail building starting next school year. We have teachers in the building who have been told that they will be giving up their classrooms to allow these preschool classes to have their space. Those classrooms, which our teachers could, for years, used renovations, are going to be renovated, or the outside private company classrooms have their preschool in there. We can use renovations like that. We haven't done that in years, even. We still have, we still have water leaking in the ceiling in the hallway from our mold problem from earlier this year. That's been going on for years and years and years, and it still hasn't been fixed. But we're going to put, we're going to put brand-new renovations in, we're going to bring a private company in to put preschool in. And we can't do that for ourselves, for our own school districts, for our own employees, for our own taxpayer-funded classrooms, children, teachers, employees. That doesn't sit right with me, or our association, or probably with most people, either if you've heard about it, or for those who might be hearing about this for the first time. That's not what public school is about. That's not what public school facility usage is about, and that's not how things are supposed to operate. When you take space that's being used by our teachers in our buildings that are being paid for with your tax dollars, and say, "Sorry, you guys are going to have to move in September because we're going to renovate this," or a private company to come in here and use it, that's not right, not right at all. And maybe you said to them, "Hey, guys, guess what? We're going to renovate these rooms because you've needed it for years and years and years. You were finally able to do it. That would be nice." But that's not happening. I think we need to rethink this plan. Sure, preschool is not a bad idea, same that, but, you know, we had an entire school that we just got rid of because we didn't have, we didn't need it. "Oh, we have too much space." But now we're throwing our own teachers out of their classrooms because we need the space. We knew that was coming. I mentioned it at a board meeting a few years ago when we closed Hudson, when we were about to close Hudson Maxim, I said, "We're going to need this space eventually," and now it's about to happen. So, I think that's something this board needs to think about, something the community needs to think about. It's really a slap in the face to anyone that works here and anyone who pays taxes Really an insult, for sure. I don't know. That's really, really pretty insulting, pretty disgraceful, and I think we need to pay a good amount of attention to that. And for anyone who's hearing about this for the first time, I would encourage you to look into it, find out about it. I'm not making it up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I'm going to just, I'm going to first. I think on, well, I know, on Friday, we're having another meeting to discuss future plans for the district. I'm going to ask you to do me a favor, and if there are items on there, facilities-wise, that you think we could improve upon, have them sent over, or let me come to that, right? You know, as a board, I am 100% sure, we are here to support everyone, teachers, administrators, parents, children. So, you know, none of these things are done intentionally, none of these things are done with analysis. We want to improve, right? We have a list of, that I saw today, $15 million of potential improvements that we're looking at, right? I don't know where we're getting $15 million, but there's a list, so these things will get done. Can't promise that we have, well, a leaky roof should be good, but overall, any enhancements that you need, come to us, right? Come to us and let us know about it, and we'll do what we can.
No, I mean, I know, necessarily the second time I say it's not a Q and A, it's really not, but Brian, Brian has emailed me this, I had given him an email response, and we spoke on the phone. I like Brian, I think he, you know, I think we do get along great. I'm a little surprised at the way you represented some of the, I'm a little surprised by how you represent some of it, because here's the truth. We have a preschool grant program that the board supports, that the community supports, which educates our three- and four-year-olds, in the end, will educate our three- and four-year-olds for free. That's the outside company Brian's talking about. That's a partnering company that we use for preschool expansion. That's grant money that we get in, that then comes in from our right hand, and we give it out to our left-hand providers to serve our three- and four-year-olds so that our students are better prepared when they come in. We're talking about three classrooms in Tulsa Trail. What is proposed to happen is three rooms will be free. There will be two less homerooms in Tulsa Trail, that's two, and there's currently a room being used for storage right now in Tulsa Trail. So those two rooms will be free, plus the room that is in storage, that will be free. That's three rooms. Will a teacher have to move from room 14 to room 12? Yeah. That may be an inconvenience to the teacher, and for that, I do understand that. That's a lot of stuff to move over. I would not be surprised, or I would not judge a teacher that felt inconvenience by moving down to another classroom. That's a lot of stuff, trust me. My family members are elementary teachers, I was a principal of an elementary school before, so I understand the efforts that, and the inconvenience we take to move to have a room in the building. What you're talking about, teachers that are moving in the building, there are three rooms that are available, and we're looking at it as an opportunity to have our preschool expansion partners here in our district for means of communication from three-year-olds all the way up to teenagers. That's really what's happening. We're not displacing people out of the building, and we're certainly not using taxpayer dollars to do any renovations. The renovation Brian's talking about is by code, preschool classrooms have to be a certain amount of square feet. So we're going to use some of that grant money, again, that's only available for use for preschool to open up a wall to give us some extra square footage so that we can use that. We're not getting tile floors and new lighting fixtures, and I don't know what might be included. So I think it's an inconvenient misrepresentation of the truth. But I do respect Brian, and I will still like him after this.
Well, I mean, the high school has a...
I have no idea what you're doing, Brian.
No Q and A.
You said something, I said something.
True, but the high school has a chemistry lab that was torn apart a year ago and still hasn't been put back together.
I'm sorry.
And we're getting into this.
I do like you, Brian, I like you, I like you.
Get us the list.
All right, sorry, Brian. Okay, I'm sorry that I can't read this name, but is it Jamie?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm Jamie Winds. I live at 113 York Road here in Opacon. So, I understand this meeting here tonight, you're not going to discuss what, anything about the school, or the budget, or whatever, until Friday, is that correct? Okay, so, I mean...
We will discuss budget if we, when we open discussion in that section of the...
Okay, but it could be 11 o'clock at night till you guys come back, when you...
No, we're back, we're back.
Okay, you came back here, so, because I've been to many a board meetings where I came to the board meeting and 11 o'clock at night, they come back out again, so. Okay, so I just kind of want to understand the concept of what you are actually. I know you have to get rid of so many teachers, you have to get rid of so many maintenance and et cetera, other people that are in this district. Is that what you're coming, is coming out to be about, and your 2% increase on our taxes? Or a 4% increase on our taxes? Because of the fact, that why? Because you didn't get a grant from the state, am I correct? For that? Hmm. Two million dollars.
All right. So, I think, I think the best way to answer this is that, that there's been a pretty sizable stated reduction to the district over the course of...
Right, I know, I know that.
Each year, we're charged with coming up with a budget, inclusive of, you know, state aid costs. There's a, just a ton of stuff. Alex runs our finance committee, they've had meeting after meeting after meeting, we've had all kinds of stuff, there's a lot that goes into this.
Yes.
At the end of the day, we have to put forth and vote on a budget that the majority of the board feels is right. All the ins and outs of that, a lot of that might surface during the discussion coming up in a few sections on the agenda, but to dig deep into that right now, I think would not be appropriate for everybody to listen to.
So then that's Friday.
No, that's discussion once we get into budget. Friday is about future, not this year.
Right, and that's your concept of, you know what, I mean, you're telling Brian to come up with suggestions.
Sure, yes, that would be Friday. Anything that we could do above and beyond what we have.
But you kind of really know as a board, really, what you're going to do in the future.
No, no, we don't. No, we don't. I can say that.
Well, you know that the school's depleting. I mean, the students, there's, when my kids graduated here, it was not what it is today, the student board, the student body, it just isn't, and it's just depleting and depleting, and it seems like, it's horrible to hear how this school district, I mean, the testing is horrible here. It's horrible. It's low, it's lower than it ever was, and it shouldn't be. And there's teachers in here that are wonderful, that have been here for years. My husband taught here. I was, I started the PTO here in this whole district, so believe me, I know what goes underneath the pages. You are the board, you are the ones that decide what's going on. We can come back to meeting after meeting after meeting. It doesn't matter. You know what you've got to do, you've got the, you've got the numbers in front of you, you've got everything in front of you. So we can suggest to you, okay, why don't you let the students, why don't you open this school up and make it Lenape 2, and close and not have a superintendent here, and not have everybody else here, so that our kids could, I mean, I don't have kids in this district, but I feel bad for these kids in this district, because they get beat here. It's always, there's no sports, there's probably not going to be a football team, it's probably not going to be anything, because of what's happening. Everybody's going to Lenape. Not everybody, the majority is going to Lenape. So, what are we doing, from 800, 900 kids to 200? That's pretty sad. 300? And so you're opening up a nursery school that's been here for, that's been here for years. Dr. Threlkow started that, and, okay, so now you got to put it in Tulsa? What happened to Hudson Maxim? You could have renovated that and done that. What happened there? Now we're going to sell it to somebody who's going to teach music? I know, I can go on and on, but I just feel strong about this town and what, how sad it is, what's being said out there, and our students suffer, and it shouldn't be, it really shouldn't.
Thank you. Rich.
I came at 7, so I don't know if I missed a bunch, and if I'm saying something that I did. Anyhow, I would just like to ask about the shared services. I know, Joe, you had mentioned it last time, and explain, and we wanted to know if there's any changes, if you were able to hook up with Jefferson, or Doma, or any of the other schools, because, man, that would be a big savings pushing off, right, the cut that the state is doing. Secondly, I would like to, and are you going to give us time to talk when you're talking about the budget, or is this the only time?
Yeah.
Okay, this is the only time, all right. Then, I would just really like to hear exactly where the extra 2% is going, you know, what's it going for, what teachers are being...
4%.
4% or whatever, that whole thing, because we as homeowners and people in town should, you know, should hear that. And then, the other thing is, I remember Alex last week talking about facts, 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 and I just, obviously, he's not here today, I don't know why, but I hope, you know, the board listens to those facts, and it's important, because that's what you have to go off of, not off of other stories. So, I hope you actually turn down and don't vote for the increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
You're here.
Moving to item 11, is annual approvals and appointments. I'm going to ask if we have a motion for items A through T. Meeting started at 5:30?
I'll move A through T.
Okay, do we have a second? Is there any discussion on A through T?
A through T?
T.
A through T.
I just wanted to pull out the approval of the curriculum. I'd like to table that until maybe Friday, especially in light of some of the issues brought up tonight.
Right, I don't...
That'd be M.
We haven't made any, just to be clear, we haven't made any changes to curriculum, but it's anything...
I know that, but the curriculum specifically for the health, the health and, I think it's helping something in the curriculum.
That's been the same since 2010.
I understand that. All I'm saying is that, I've read it, okay, I've read it thoroughly, and I've found that it's so loosely defined that it could mean anything, depending upon what you want. So therefore, you really need to drill into and find what the lesson plans are in order to find out what's actually going on in the classroom.
May I, may I ask, I respect your position, may I ask that we approved the curriculum and that we discussed exactly what we're discussing, but we still have, as a matter of annual renewals and appointments, I want to make sure that we cover things that need to improve.
But we don't need to approve it today.
We can, but, my only point is, I understand what you want to do, and I want to do that too.
I know you do.
To go through the curriculum late and, and that's why we added this, you know, every, I've already made a standardized format, I want to go through the stuff, but you know I do.
Yep.
I want to just make sure that we, we're approving this curriculum, and if we don't do it today, when would you propose we do it?
Brian.
Yeah, okay.
Just that, just this one. Everything else is fine.
This is fine.
Okay.
My heart.
I'm going to move that we table that, so that we can take a vote to discuss it in exquisite You have a motion to table on the floor?
Yes.
Yes. We need a second.
In that case, I'll second it.
Okay, so let's call a roll on tabling item M.
Just give me one second so I can put the...
To take action on Friday, yeah, okay.
Table, I defer until Friday.
29th, I think?
Okay, so we're tabling 11M.
And that motion is Mr. DiStefano, seconded by Mr. Grunfelder, to table item M. Ms. Falcone Schuber?
Yes.
Ms. Gulan?
Yes.
Dr. Schindler is absent, Mr. Grunfelder?
Yes.
Mr. DiStefano?
Yes.
Ms. Turkington?
Yes.
Ms. Polachina?
Yes.
Mr. McLean is absent, Mr. Francis?
Yes. Okay, so now we're going to come back and let's, we're going to A through E, the exception of M.
Point of order, if Friday we're talking about?
Friday.
Day?
This Friday.
Okay.
All right. Remotion? Let's get a remotion.
What?
Feels good. A through T without M.
Yeah, I'll, number one. Good.
Two. Yeah, A through T without M.
Again, a motion to table. I mean, you went through the whole thing, I'd like to take them...
That's no, that's no problem.
Sherry Adam.
Is there a second to Jerry's motion?
Hold up, hold up. No, there's no need for a motion to table. We're at the point of discussion. So you could discuss any portion of this motion without a motion to table.
Prior to the vote.
Especially prior to the vote, that's the point of the discussion.
Okay, so then, in that case, on 11A, the appointment of the board secretary, do we have an evaluation of the board secretary?
I evaluate just as a business manager.
That's not what I am.
I know, but I was...
Do we have an evaluation of the board secretary?
The more appropriate question is, do we have a procedure for the evaluation?
No, no, a procedure is in the policy manual. That's not the more appropriate question. The more appropriate question is whether or not one has been done, that's what I wanted to know.
The answer, I think, is no.
I mean, it would have to be done by the board.
I think it's...
The policy manual for, for an evaluation to be done by the superintendent.
As a board secretary?
Jerry, do you have the reference to that specific part?
Good news is, I have not yet had that opportunity, so, there's still a chance to fix this law.
And going on to F. We're recommending by the superintendent that Dr. Joseph Piccirillo and Mr. Arthur Benedetto be appointed as the affirmative action officers for the '22, '23 school year. Does it make sense to appoint Mr. Benedetto in light of the fact that he is an acting interim and may not be here?
Rhetorical, or are you asking a question?
I'm asking a question.
It, to me, it makes sense, that's why I'm recommending it, because also, I'm recommending later in your agenda that you continue in that role for this coming school. $35 an hour for three days a week.
Okay, and item G, the appointment of liability, workers' compensation, record. I believe I asked at one of our meetings whether or not we could request proposals for a self-insured, self-insured, re-insured workers' comp plan, and as of right now, nothing has come of that. I will tell you that in prior districts, when I've done that, we've experienced savings in the amount of between $100 and $150,000. In addition, I've never met the representative from Arthur the Galliser. I don't know who he is, I don't know what his credentials are.
You want to table G as well?
I do.
Okay, so for A, I have A, B, F, and G.
And M.
And M, but I think M's already gone. Yes, we'll, let him get to that.
Okay, and letter I, the appointment of...
Sure. Good question. You want to table them until like our next formal meeting, or they're just until Friday?
I'd like to table them until such time as we can have a meeting, whether it's the external meeting or an interim meeting. So at least, you're asking, you're asking me to cast my vote to appoint someone I've never met.
I think that would be probably, generally speaking, almost everything that you approve on the agenda has your time.
With all due respect. With all due respect, I'm not gonna cast a vote to appoint somebody that I've never met.
That's a, that's a high bar.
It's a high bar?
I do believe that, respectfully, I believe that, because I think you have many, you're appointing teachers, every teacher in the district, you're appointing new substitutes.
That, to me, is pro forma, this is not.
Okay.
The asbestos management officer, are we sure that we have the right and the correct certifications?
Do you want to meet him too? Would you like to meet the asbestos manager? I'm asking if he wants to meet the asbestos manager, yes. Sounds like he wants to meet each person on the agenda before he'll approve them. I just need to know whether that's status quo or not. And I'm not trying to be a jerk, I'm trying to, like, understand, it sounds like we want to meet every person listed on this agenda before we can move forward with it, and I apologize, but that's, that's the direction that seems to be heading in. And I just want to move forward with that, please.
We, the question, but also, we have the certifications, let's, let's answer that question, then we'll go back to it.
Does, does...
Jerry, just ask the question again, because I think that's a fair question.
Yeah, are we, are we convinced, and do we know that Mr. Geary has all the certifications and licenses required to perform the duties the board should ask me as to vote to appoint?
I believe he has those certifications. Do I have them presently to present to you? No.
I'm not asking for the certifications to be presented, but if this gentleman is going to be in charge of certain pretty important operations in this district, is he certified to give it? The question is either yes or no. I don't believe it's a question of having the certification in your back pocket, that's not what I am. I want to be sure that he has the correct certifications.
Yes, I think you can be assured of that. He's the supervisor of our facilities.
So you're assuring me that that is true?
Yeah.
Okay. On the appointment of attorneys...
Do you mean Debbie?
On the appointment of attorneys, did we solicit, in our opinion, this year for legal services? Or are we, are we just continuing the appointment as it is without ensuring whether or not sufficient legal services could be provided at a lower cost? That, by the way, is no reflection on the attorney, it's a reflection on the responsibility of this Board of Education to get the best bang for the buck.
Oh, we just, I'm having a hard time knowing what your questions are about, I'm sorry, I apologize. So, we, we did just renegotiate that contract, Scott and I did that together, not a year ago, so...
It's not the question that I asked. The question that I asked is...
I did not feel sufficient to go out and ask for other votes, because we just renegotiated that contract.
I agree, and it is great, I don't think you should vote every year. And the appointment of tax shelter annuity companies, my question there is that all of the companies that are listed, to the best of my knowledge and belief, are in a position to supply annuity products. And annuity products are significantly more expensive than other options and alternatives. So if we did not solicit proposals from other companies, because right now, teachers, whether they realize it or not, are paying between 2 and 3/4 and 3% on their investments. A firm like Vanguard or Fidelity, which are very well-known for their low reload security, I think should be added to the menu of tax shelter and annuity companies. And I have people asking all the time, oh, I got my statement, and it doesn't, it doesn't show anything. And the reason why it doesn't is because the fee is deducted before the statement is printed.
No, that's, that wasn't a question, that was, you know, we can always add on, I believe, we can add on other carriers into that plan. I remember we did it one year with, so we could do that as a matter of...
I'm just, I'm just suggesting that, that as an employer, I believe we have a responsibility to give our employees a breadth of choice, and when I read the companies that are listed, except for the name of the company, there's no choice. Now, I'm on letter, I'm on letter S, which is the adoption of the Code of Ethics, which I'm sure every, everyone is aware of and well-versed in. Are we not supposed to be presented with written copies of the Code of Ethics, so that we can sign them, date them, and have them on file in the board secretary's office?
They were sent...
No, they were not.
They were, they were, I review or date, and they are...
I didn't get...
Yeah, it's, it was in the, the only reason I have it, I printed it out.
Then my question is, how, how is it that other people got it and I did not? When did it come out?
This is, it came out on...
That's...
It took days ago.
Tuesday.
It took days ago.
Jerry Cussler. Yeah, that's right.
And that's the same one, because I was copying it, and now I have it.
Then I withdraw my objection to that. And on travel and related expenses maximum, my question there is, how can we approve an expenditure for which we have not yet budgeted?
Because you're, you're approving a maximum. Everything else, everything gets approved, and it's always on the agenda.
I understand that, but how are we able to commit next fiscal year's money on this agenda?
You're not.
We are.
No, this, as a matter of law, this aspect of the reserve does not approve any expense. It sets parameters for the approval.
And the parameters, the parameters should be set the next year's budget, because as of here, it looks as though it's coming out this year.
No, it's parameter, there's no appropriation, no money is changed.
Jerry, there, there is a line item in the budget of $7,500 for board travel expense. If you look at the, at the, at the new budget, the 22, 23 budget, there is a line item specifically about board, board travel expenses, $7,500. That's in there, so there's something there, this allows the superintendent, I'm sorry, Scott, help me...
No, no, please.
This allows the superintendent and frankly, the board to approve up to $75,000. Now, do we have that money in the budget? No, but if necessary, they can move things around like they always do. Is it likely? Heck, no, I don't even think we'll spend $7,500.
But, you know, something can happen. You don't know, a hurricane in the building, and it falls down, then you have to find the money to find the ticket, you don't know.
This is related to travel.
I understand that.
Travel, I've lost track.
But a, but a building falling down, to me, is quite a different circumstance than a, than a trip to a convention.
And they'd be approved along the way, so if we ever, to Phil's point, if we got the $6,000, I think all of our ears would be perked up, wondering how much farther we're gonna go.
Then I guess my request would be that the resolution be drafted in more clear language, so that I don't make that error.
Alright, so, to recap this, there's a, you have a motion right now to...
Yes, I actually made the motion.
Oh.
We're, we're still discussing this part of the motion.
So is there any other discussion on any of these items? It's then where we're at.
I just, how would you reword T? What's your suggestion to reword it? With your satisfaction?
I wouldn't have it on the agenda at all, because we haven't yet finalized the 22, 23 budget, and I don't know where that $75,000 is going to be.
Well, it's not just board numbers, it's also for employees, so there's other accounts that are addressed. And I don't remember from the detailed budget, how much was allocated for travel expenses for employees, I'm sure it's there somewhere. Jeff, do you have any idea?
But we're not, we're not budgeting, we're not necessarily budgeting that money spent. We're putting that as a cap on what could be spent. I understand where you're coming from, if you cap it, then you should have the money there potentially spent it, but, but it's, it's not a spend, it's a limit as to what we could spend.
Why would you get a $1.9 million budget deficit? And we're talking about putting $75,000 in the budget? I don't think that is just redundant. I think that it's obscene.
It is a requirement under the law that the Board of Education, every year, set a maximum cap on the amount of money that it will allocate for potential travel reimbursement for employees. It is not just for conferences, that includes money for teachers that have to travel to state-mandated workshops, and it also covers reimbursement, mileage reimbursement, for staff members that are stationed at more than one school and have to travel back and forth between those schools. So what the board is approving on item T is a cap that stipulates by law that the Board of Ed cannot spend more than $75,000 on travel-related expenditures for the year, and as the board always does, monthly as required by law, it has to approve each individual conference and travel reimbursement prior to it occurring, that draws down from what your potential cap may be.
And what was the cap last year?
It has not increased, it's $75,000. The Board of Ed has not increased its travel allowance in multiple years.
And how much have we spent to date?
I can't give you an idea to date, because it isn't something I looked at today.
Well, my feeling and position on that is that I'm opposed to putting $75,000 in next year's budget because of the fact that we're facing a $1.9 million budget gap, and I want to be sure that we take care of the priority items first, and I don't believe that travel should be one of the priority items.
Okay. Alright, so that's, any other discussion?
No.
Okay, so now, Jerry, I just need you to help me, because I want to get it the way you want it. Are you gonna, well, let's have you make a motion first, and then you can tell us what we're, what you're looking to do. No, we, we, here's the question. Jerry, do you wish to make a motion to table those aspects of the number 11? That you've been going through. And so...
11, 11A and 11B, 11G, not A.
Leave it outside. M, M is already gone.
Let me, let me, sorry, L.
Letter M and letter O. My request in the motion is that those be tabled until we get further information.
Okay, so it's, it's a motion to table A, B, G, I, J, O, and O.
M?
M is already out, we already voted on her, so M is already gone. So it's A, B, G, I, J, and O.
No, oh, you told me, you told me what the...
You're okay with that?
Sure.
Alright, so it's A, B, G, I, J. That's it. A, B, G, I, and J. Okay, is there a second?
Not two.
Not two, not two. Is there a second?
Not, not, no, not, with the explanation given, we still reserve the right to vote no on any of those travel requests that come up.
That comes up later. Okay, so you can also vote no on the whole resolution.
Okay, so it's a, a motion from Jerry to table A, B, G, I, and J. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, now we're back in discussion. Obviously, that works. Okay, Jeff, please call the roll on, solely on the motion to table. Yep, motion to table items A, B, G, I, and J. Motion by Mr. Grunfelder, seconded by Mr. DiStefano, Ms. Falcone Schuber?
No.
Ms. Gulan?
No.
Dr. Schindler is absent, Mr. Grunfelder?
What am I voting on?
Your motion.
Okay. Table.
Then I'm voting yes.
Ms. Polachina?
No.
Mr. McLean is absent, Mr. Francis? Stay with me, so, yes on A, no on B, no on G, no on I, no on J.
And that's it.
Motion's now to carry.
Okay, we're back, we're in discussion on resolution 11.
Okay. So we're back in, back in discussion on resolution 11.
I'd like to move 11A.
It's already, it's already...
Okay, I don't have to do it again?
Nope.
We're back to my original?
So if there's, if there's no discussion, we'll vote.
Richard, because the motion to table failed.
Okay.
The whole thing is.
How did, how did you terminate that?
What? A, two, three, four, five.
Five, one, five, one. So yeah, but it was four, right? Yeah. So it's a jury?
Yes, jury, yes.
Okay.
No, no, that would be jury.
Alright, uh, Jeff, if, if, if there's more discussion, Jeff.
Yep. The original motion to approve items A, eleven A through T, item M having been tabled. Uh, Ms. Falcone Schubert.
Yes.
Ms. Gulan.
Yes.
Dr. Shinlar is absent. Mr. Grunfelder.
No.
Mr. Di Stefano.
Yes.
Ms. Turkington.
Yes.
Ms. Pollicena.
Yes.
Mr. McLean is absent. Mr. Francis.
Yes.
Motion to carry.
Thank you, Jeff.
Item twelve, finance. Look for a motion, move items twelve A through F.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Right, discussion. We're gonna have a discussion.
We are.
In any particular order?
In any particular order.
Okay. Jerry, you have any here?
Yes, I do. As we're sitting here, everyone in this room is going to be facing an invisible tax rate increase of anywhere from twenty twelve to fifteen percent. That's gonna be as a result of the inflationary pressures that we're going to get very, very shortly. The reason why I am going to oppose this budget is that I don't feel confident that we have thoroughly enough explored all the potential avenues of revenue, nor the opportunities to reduce expenditures. When I did that, these are my own numbers and of course, they could be off, but when I did that, I came up with a number of two million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, under those circumstances, I believe if we had the opportunity to relook the budget line by line, it may in fact eliminate the need to reduce staff. And so, I think I said from the, from the very outset that my primary purpose is not to reduce staff because where education takes place is in a classroom between a teacher and a student. So, I remember asking for a purchase increase on January the twenty-two. We're looking at a one point nine million dollar deficit. No purchase increase has been, has been implemented. I asked about the opportunity of selling advertising space on our school buses, selling advertising space on our BOs, and selling advertising space on the electronic sign that we have on Lakeside Avenue. And the response I got was too much work or too little return. Now, I would not want to stand in front of a teacher who is not going to be renewed and say to that individual, I really didn't wanna do that much work because I didn't think we were going to save, you know. No one in, no one in this room has taken any significant steps to contest the reductions in state school aid. I spent a fair amount of time researching those cuts. And I have not been able to find a law that gives the state the authority to take that money back. And my biggest concern is, are they taking the money back retroactively? And if they are, I think we can, I think we can, I think we can successfully contest that in a court of law. In terms of the, in terms of the curriculum, I looked at the curriculum that State Board of Education passed. I looked at the sex ed curriculum that Senator, Senator Ben Gopel introduced. And as the gentleman in the back said, I am a practicing Roman Catholic and that curriculum violates my religious beliefs. And in terms of teachers working in a classroom and delivering any curriculum, all of the education law that I had studied holds that the teacher is in what is known as in loco parentis, meaning in place of the parent.
Jerry, we're in discussion on finance. Can I use the finance?
I also was, was trying to find out whether or not we could float bonds to cover the budget deficit. Payback period would be over thirty years. And we could much more easily absorb that into our budget rather than having it come out all at once. So those are some of the reasons, perhaps not all, but some of the reasons why I would vote no.
Jerry, any other discussion? Yeah. Alright. Uh, I gotta stand up otherwise, otherwise I'm gonna be busy. Sorry about this. I'm gonna bore you to death with a lot of facts. I apologize that I've advanced, but the fact. In our stu-, in our class, sorry, in our, in our, in our school, we have fourteen-hundred-and-sixty-one students. According to the state, it's fourteen-hundred-and-thirty-five, but the superintendent made, made a correction for me or found some correction for me. The number of teachers that will, that will have on staff as of, according to the four percent increase budget is a hundred and fifty-five. If twenty-four, twenty-six of them would be non-tenure teachers. If we had zero percent tax increase, we would have a hundred and forty-nine teachers. Only difference of six. Six additional. There are going to be cuts regardless. It could be six additional. The teacher, the student-teacher ratio, uh, this, uh, according to the state, and this really reflects last year's statistic, is a one to ten. One teacher to ten students. It's kind of a misnomer or misinformation in some respects because it doesn't take into effect or into account for the special ed students and IEP students and that type of thing. So it's not quite that, but on average, that statement is true. With a hundred and fifty-five teachers and fourteen-hundred-and-sixty-one students, the ratio is one to nine point four two. With a hundred and forty-nine teachers, the ratio is one point nine eight three. That's four tenths of a student difference between a zero percent increase and a four percent increase. Again, it's not really excellent, uh, validation of a, of a, of a point that I'm trying to make where it's not excellent because we don't have the details of these, of these, uh, special ed students. We don't have that level of detail unfortunately, not yet. The statewide, however, statewide, uh, ratio is one to twelve. Make the one. The recommendation for special ed students varies depending upon the type of, of, the type of disability that they suffer. But at the high side, it's like one to fifteen, on the low side, it's like one to four. It actually gets down to one to one in some cases. So what's the solution? How do we deal with this? Well, the Temptations had a song back in the seventies or the eighties. Use my age, but there it is. They, they had a, a song called Fall of Confusions. No one.
You're not gonna sing it.
Oh, I'm not gonna sing it. Oh, God, no. So there's two lines that kind of like popped out of me. But one is, uh, no one is interested in learning but the teacher. The other line is politicians say more taxes will solve everything. And this is the problem we've got. More taxes, better teachers, more teachers, what do we need? So a lot of it has to do with the community. It's not just up to us. It's not just how well our dad and how, how much we wanna teach the children what they need and what. They're like, too, buddy.
Oh, my. The band played on.
This is, this is a stereo. My wife on this note, but this is, this is time for my meds. You can tell I need meds. Alright, so now what's the solution? Here's a, a potential solution. I did a lot of research on what, how many people are, how many students should there be for a, uh, uh, how many students per teacher should there be? Like, a lot of research out, looked at about five or six papers, a lot of the, a lot of, uh, Google requests, a lot of Google searches. I even did, uh, some searches using Google Scholar. I don't know if anyone has looked or used Google Scholar, but that, that's an interesting way to get the very detailed academic information. And this is what I came up with. Well, first of all, New Jersey recommends for K through three that the ratio should be one teacher per twenty-one student. Now, currently, we, we actually get pretty close to that mark in our, in our eighth through, uh, eighth through grade. We're really close to that mark. However, the studies that I've read says the dream number, the dream ratio is one to eighteen. I'd rather get to one to eighteen. That's would be my objective so that we can better improve, uh, improve the lives of those kids and get them on more learned, starting to learn faster, uh, because they have more attention at those lower, at their younger age. So we should try to get, it should be an aim or a goal of the board. However, in order to do that, we have to change the ratios at the upper level. Well, it turns out from information that the superintendent provided to me that we kind of have a progression going from like twenty-two, twenty-one in eighth through grade up to twenty-six. Sorry, one to twenty-six up to the eighth grade. I, I didn't get the information on the high school, but it could be a lot higher. The ratios could actually go up to, uh, up to thirty-five at a higher grade. This is especially true of juniors and seniors because they're gonna be going into college in a couple of years, seventy-five percent by delay. Seventy-five percent of our students go to college and graduate at the success rate. So seventy-five percent of those children graduate from Opacom, go to college and finish college. When they go to college, they have lectures, lecture halls. There the ratio is one to, one to five hundred. But they need to get used to the idea of having less, less teachers per student. So the way, the way, okay, so in my mind, we can basically have a, a higher progression going from eighteen at the kindergarten level, maybe the, I don't know whether it's for pre-K frankly, but at the kindergarten level, go to eighteen if we can do it, and go up to thirty-five even more when you finally get to senior. Now, what that number is, can't really tell at this moment in time unfortunately. Again, was we don't really have the details on what it is that we need for special ed students. But we still can do it. We still get up to thirty-five, but that I'm pretty sure. Now, the superintendent, um, suggested at our last, uh, S A meeting that we have a, that he has a, a new software product. Actually, I don't know if it's just software, it's really a service product, full paper, which I'm really excited about. What this does is it allows, um, students, primarily in, in the upper, the upper grades probably down to what?
Sixth grade, fifth grade, goes to the lower.
Even that, lower than that. It's basically a tutoring service for the kids. So, so some of the children will have an opportunity to use this tutoring service where you have, you know, thirty-five kids in a class and now the teacher's not giving you quite as much attention than you would hope. Well, they got the tutor to help them. So it's, it's, it's something to augment and, and to, and to help the students get over that higher ratio problem. So again, I think we could actually get down to, get up to thirty-five students in the upper classes. Now, what that exactly means as far as the number of teachers, I'm not entirely sure yet again because of special ed students. So I've asked the superintendent some additional information, uh, and, and he's provided some of it. Unfortunately, he can provide all of it, um, because we need Tammy Miller who's the, the expert on, on, uh, special ed, to come in. And, and the criteria for, for, uh, for, for special ed students varies greatly depending upon what their disability is. Alright, so I got a big paper here if anyone's interested in reading it, just what that criteria is. Frankly, I don't understand half of it yet, so I know the reason why I have to talk to Tammy. But my, my point is this. This is the motion I'm going to make. My motion frankly is to postpone the rest of this meeting regarding budget. Until Friday, Tammy can give me the information I need. We all need it. Pardon me. I'm gonna give you some references. I did my research, there's, um, last year's year of class size, go look that one up. Um, I, I've also read Lexi Paris. Correct. How I pronounce his last name. He had an interesting article, The Effects of Class Size on Grades in Corso di Adoglio. Then there was Chung and Content, Constantinople. They used a, a, a quick, a quick title, a regression analysis. It's another interesting paper. Again, they all conclude low grades need to have a much lower ratio of students. That is, teacher, student ratio, much lower. There's another problem that we have at Opacom. This is what really hurts. The problem is that in Opacom, Alex brought this up at our last meeting. Alex basically said that of the hundred, five-hundred-and-ninety-nine districts in, in this, in the state of New Jersey, uh, Opacom ranks number ten in the highest paid, highest payers. Number ten. That means four-hundred-and-eighty-nine districts pay much, make, pay much on average, less than we do. That's a, a big red flag. That has to change. We, we, we can't afford, ultimately cannot afford to maintain that. Now, how we got to that point because, you know, prior boards, uh, frankly approved too many, uh, uh, tenure positions.
It only means people have been here a long time.
Right, right, right.
Oh, I'm out of order. I'm sorry. But that's what it means.
But Brian, talk to me later, I wanna hear your opinion. But not here. Nevertheless, we still have a very high ratio. We have a hundred and fifty-five, uh, teachers. We have a hundred and twenty-nine of them are tenures. Many, many of them are seventeen years, uh, uh, in their position or, or more. But seventeen years for the most, the majority of the fine people, but I can tell. You actually, you can tell by the shape of the country, not the sheet. Only twenty-six of them are non-tenures. Now, at one point, a couple of, I guess a couple of meetings ago, and also, I think privately, superintendent said to me, Phil, you know, I'll do whatever the board wants me to do. If I, if you say zero percent or two percent or four percent or six percent, doesn't matter. I'm gonna get this kid, the kids educated anyway. So I know he's up for a challenge. The challenge there therefore is frankly to look a little bit deeper as to how we allocate the resources that we've got. Maybe we need more. I don't know. I don't have enough information to actually come up and answer that question. And I gotta make a point, the last, my last point is frankly something that Jerry mentioned. That has to do with inflation. February inflation, the inflation rate went up to seven point nine, March it was up to eight and a half percent. And frankly, it looks like it's gonna go higher. Maybe not, but hopefully, hopefully not. Variable rate mortgages are gonna go up. They're gonna go up substantially. Maria and I have a variable rate mortgage with like, I think, two and a half to three percent. Next year, I'm sure it's gonna be five to seven percent, if not higher than that. That's gonna make a big difference in a lot of people's lives, have to deal with that. So increased taxes is a problem. Yes, it's true, uh, many residents can't afford a tax increase. We've made that a value. Unfortunately, Board of Education does not have the wherewithal to say who gets taxed and who doesn't. Right, that's up to town council. Mr. Councilman. And there you go. So you, you all can actually make, make some changes in that area, or it's considered anyway. Oh, yeah, one thing that, that bugged me, that's something I'm concerned about is that according to the state statistics, uh, this is a report that was issued last, a couple of weeks ago, that nineteen percent of the students on Opacom are, come from economically challenged homes. That's twenty percent of our students are coming from academic, academic, economically challenged homes. That's a problem. I mean, if we raise taxes on, on these parents, and if they're renters, they're gonna end up paying more anyway because if that rent's gonna have to go up, how are they gonna afford to even live here? They may not. Alright, so I'm making my motion. My motion is to table this until I get some information from Tammy. Because frankly, it could go either way. I, I don't know. You know, when Tammy and I meet and, and, uh, superintendent, uh, provides additional information, then we'll know whether or not we need more teachers or we need less. Or we can even get away with less. Or we can even get away with less. That's my motion. Is there, is there a second to Phil's motion?
We're in discussion, right?
We are. But I made a motion.
Oh, my apologies.
A mo, a motion to table takes priority over. You have to take that up.
So is there a second to, uh?
Yes, I'll second it.
Any discussion of the motion to table?
Come on, Jackie, I know you have something to say.
I, I don't think it's fair to make a motion right before everyone else makes, you know, their point of view.
I, I don't understand. Am I allowed to?
We can talk about it.
We're in, yeah, we're in discussion, so it's open discussion.
Thank you. My apologies. I was, followed the letter of the law.
We're in discussion about the motion to table.
That's the only thing we're discussing?
That's this moment in time. Right now, because I know, we're bound by Robert's rules, under Robert's rules. Motion to table takes priority.
The motion within the motion.
I'm becoming a, I'm becoming a commentator.
All right, so.
I can move to the point where I can discuss.
That'll be when we're done with the vote. Okay, so let's, let's, if there's no other discussion on the motion, the motion, let's Jeff please vote on whether or not to accept.
Motion to table, items twelve A through twelve F.
Until, until Friday. Till Friday. Till Friday. Till Friday, until, until we get the rest of the information, so we can make an intelligent, foreign decision.
Motion by Mr. Di Stefano.
I expect, I expect to get that information before Friday, but I don't get it. All right.
Seconded by Mr. Grunfelder, Ms. Falcone Schuber.
No.
Ms. Gulon.
No.
Dr. Shinlar is absent. Mr. Grunfelder.
Would you read the?
Motion to table.
Is this on the motion, is this on the motion to table?
Motion to table, items twelve A through twelve F until Friday, April twenty-ninth.
Yes.
Mr. Di Stefano?
Yes.
Ms. Turkington?
No.
Ms. Colachena?
No.
Mr. McLean is absent. Mr. Francis?
No.
The motion fails to count.
Okay, now we're back in discussion on, correct.
My turn?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, so, a couple of points, just to counterbalance, a couple of things that Phil said earlier. Again, just points. So we commented on, we have to prepare our college, our students for college, big class. My daughter personally, and this is just a personal note, is applying to a school that has less than two thousand students, and the class sizes are fifteen and under. So not everybody in such a school with a large class size, just a weight of milk stuff. I, we're be clear about that. So there are colleges that offer smaller class sizes, and my daughter works right in that environment. Somebody said to me that, um, your town is only as good as your schools, and the only way to make your schools good is by investing in them. We haven't invested in our school in quite a few years. We have not increased the budget. Years ago, when it was to the town to vote, it was failed every time, came to the board to vote with two percent. We passed it for a couple of years, and in the last several years, there has been no budget increase. We were hit with these very large cuts, and I understand the cuts happen, those are, the amount of cuts are out of our control. But it's also our responsibility to find a way to keep our students in the district by investing. By having a zero percent or having no increase, it looks like another six teachers would lose their jobs, based on the information shared. When we've already lost teachers that are valuable to our district, we can't afford to lose six more teachers when we have students that want to stay in this district. Everybody wants to have a choice, but the choice to stay is just as valuable as the choice to go to Letty Beach, which not everybody gets to do, or the choice to go to Sussex Tech or Sussex Charles School. The choice to stay is just as valuable as the option for those to want to leave. And the only way to get students to stay is to give them the teachers and the resources and the curriculum that they need to do that. And at some point, I will give up that cup of coffee, and I will continue to work as hard as I do, so that my daughter, who graduated next year, with the classes she needs and the kids coming up behind her, can have the education. And we can invest in great programs that will keep the students from going away. That we can eventually bring back our social, emotional learning teacher that everybody needs and knows is valuable. There are so many reasons to invest in the students now, and we have to use that four percent to do that. We have to have those teachers stay. We can't afford to lose six more teachers when we've already lost not just the one that everybody came to rally for, but nine more. We've lost so many teachers with just, just because, and that's, we have to have that increase just to avoid losing six more. To those point, we need those smaller classes at the elementary school. We can't have thirty-five kids in a high school when, when kid reports are happening and issues are happening at the high school. We're worried about bullying and, and, and all of those other issues that are happening, because there may not be enough time where people to help monitor those classrooms. We can't afford thirty-five kids in a classroom at that level. It's such a recipe for disaster. And the only way to reasonably educate our kids and keep them in the district is to invest in the schools. And when the schools get better, people will wanna come to the town, people will move into the town, and they will educate their kids in the town. And every single senior citizen had a stu, had another senior citizen when they were a child pay for their education. So you may be a senior citizen now, but when you're a child, somebody else ahead of you paid for your education. So this is not a new cycle of how, how taxes work. Everybody pays for everybody's education. It's part of living in a community that has a public school. And we have, we have to, have to, have to start investing now. Four percent this year may only be two percent next year, but we have to get it in there. You have to. You have to keep the students in school. And I'm talking to the board, but I'm talking to, but I'm talking to the board. So that's my story. I'm sticking to it, and that's where I stand on that.
Thank you, Jeff. I have to go to small rebuttal, okay?
Certainly.
You're speaking from emotion, and I get that. You're not basing it upon backs.
I disagree.
No, you're just saying, we need more teachers. That's all you're saying. You don't, we don't know the answer to that question until we do a proper analysis of what data exists. We don't.
Fair enough.
See, I'm sorry, you're just talking.
Understood. I still stand by my.
No, 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 your opinion, your, 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 you should have an opinion. I know you do.
No, I just wanna say, the information that you're looking for from Tammy is a little different than the information that we were given.
Yeah, I know.
I think in January, we were given home room class sizes, right, and that did show the increase. And I, and we also were given the special ed numbers, because I asked for them at our meeting, and the breakdown. So I do think that we've spoken about this budget nauseam, which we should do. And I do think we all asked good questions. I don't think that the answers to the questions you're looking for would change the vote, in my opinion, because special ed is so particular as far as disability and how you need to educate the kids. I do know that Dr. Picoel did do exactly what you said. He focused on the elementary grades. I think when you talk about high school numbers, it's very difficult to say the ratio, because there are electives, right? So if you look at English nine, right, and that home room size, because everybody needs to take English nine in ten, eleven, and twelve, that is a much better indicator than just taking the lump sum of the students. And just talking to a couple of parents, in particular ones who have honors kids, that the kids are busting at the doors. So in English class in particular, thinking about all the essays the teacher has to grade, and there are a large number of students in those classes.
Busting out the door.
Yes, yes, busting out, right, right. I don't have the numbers, though, but I can say in the core curriculum, it's not nine to one, right? So I think when you're talking about numbers, I'm not a math person, but there's always a way to kind of look at the data and kind of, not skew it, but different ways to look at it. So I just wanna make that point. And, and just so everybody, audience knows, like, we've asked all these questions. We have class size list. We saw what the budget would look like as far as class size, with a zero percent increase, with a two percent increase, with a four, with a six, okay? And myself, as an educator for eighteen years, somebody who lives in this town, with a school in this town, loves the town, loves the teachers, loves the kids, in my heart of hearts and in my mind, this is the right thing to do.
Any other discussion?
I, I agree with you. It's what, you know, we, we didn't get that information. But the difference, the number, the difference of the number of children in the class is very tiny, maybe one or two, whether or not it's zero, four, or six. All right, it's one or two. That doesn't make much of a difference when it comes to a child. I mean, how much more attention is a child going to get if there's twenty-two or twenty kids in a class?
But to your point, the magic number was eighteen. So now you're going from eighteen to twenty, twenty-two to twenty-four. So now your deviations are going over. Right now, that's not looking at K through three. So I'm just saying, that information would be good to have. I just don't think it would make or break the decision, at least for me. I think maybe one or two now, but then next year, we're gonna be here again, and we're gonna be looking at, you know.
We have to lose another, I think, two and a half next year.
So trying to save the number of teachers because they can't, as you said, a year. Instead of slowly cutting away at, at the teacher, so the ratio can seem higher. It'll maybe be one or two this year, but the next year, okay, there's one or, one or two more kids then. So now we're looking at four more. Yeah, it's just, I'm not necessarily a fact that it's just gonna be.
I know. I'm, I'm really concerned, frankly, that, you know, that, that we raise taxes at a point where I think four percent is a little bit high. I'm very concerned that eventually, you know, next year, you're right, we're gonna have to, we'll probably have to raise another two percent in order to maintain the number of teachers. And frankly, I think we're gonna lose that more anyway, which is another issue, you know. If you're gonna, if you save six this year, but you're gonna lose eight next year because we're gonna have to deal with the cuts, you're, you're in trouble again. I mean, is it a good idea to, to, to keep these, keep the teachers on salary with, you know, they're gonna be nervous, oh, am I gonna have a job next year or not? They don't, they don't even know. I mean, I think it's cruel to them, or cruel potentially, if cruel to them.
But we have retirements to consider. We don't know who will retire next year. We can maintain, we may, they may lose four or five teachers to retirement, which prevents us from cutting some of those positions.
I, I understand that.
I don't think we can, I don't think we, nobody's, I mean, somebody could say to me, Jackie, I'm firing you today because in three years, we're closing your branch of the bank. So we're gonna let you go now to go find another job, and then what happens if they don't? So I, I think that that's a, and I apologize. I think that's a weird analogy to use, that we're saving them the heartache next year.
Well, I, I, I have a little concern about that. Well, let's ask the superintendent. Time for you to have a chat.
I appreciate that. Thank you for the input.
By the way, he's, he's a brilliant man. Love him like he was. What do, what do we ask him? I haven't decided yet. I'm working on that.
Also, if we have a teacher that is making ninety, hundred, hundred, eleven thousand dollars a year, they retire, and we can bring in a newer teacher at the bottom of the totem pole at sixty, then we're saving them one money there.
Do you think, do you think those two are equivalent? That, that is, an inexperienced teacher is the same as an experienced teacher?
And it's, teachers that retire, or teachers that retire?
Yeah, a teacher that's retiring, I mean, that God bless them, but they're working as long as they did, but if you think they're the same.
Some are absolutely worse than they are. Others can't wait for a fire.
Well, all right, so I've, I've read through this, and there's lots of studies. One of the studies basically says, the more experienced teachers are indeed the better teacher. It's not the, it's not the young ones, the new ones. It's not. It's the more experienced teachers are better. You don't think so? Do your homework. Read the, read the papers. I'm telling you.
I'll thank you.
All right. But, but I still had a question.
Phil called me through.
Yeah, let's, let's.
I didn't get to hear the question.
Yeah, Mr. Brilliant. So the que, the question is basically a follow-up on, on what Jackie was talking about. And that is, if, if you can provide an expectation, how many of our senior teachers do you expect to retire next year? Can you give us a number?
No, my brilliance doesn't go that far.
You're not as brilliant as I had hoped.
No, you're asking me to be clairvoyant, and I am not.
I wanna, I wanna, I wanna jump in. I think, um, you know, for everybody in the, in the audience, and my peers, that's one of the things that makes this a very difficult process, especially when you're looking at a district like ours, which does have a lot of teachers with a lot of, a lot of years in service. You know, that's a good thing, right? That means our teachers are staying here because they like it here. And but it's, on the, on the budgetary side, it becomes difficult, because teachers who are here for a long time make a lot of money, and, and they should. That's great. For anyone who's got the packet in front of them, I'm gonna ask you to look at page, if you're inclined to do so, look at page seven. There's something here. I was talking through this. I'm in discussion, we're in discussion. Yeah, totally. At the bottom, you'll see the total budget number, thirty-four million, eight sixty-one.
Are you on page seven?
Page seven.
Page seven.
Page seven. If you look up, uh, towards the top of the page, you'll see Fund Eleven, General, General Operating Fund, thirty-one, seven. Right? Uh, that's the actual money that we do in preschool, right? That money, we don't use that. That goes right out the door to different things. At the, at, based on an estimate that, that I discussed with Jeff today, by the time the state aid cuts are done, that general operating fund is gonna be somewhere in the ballpark of twenty-eight million dollars. We, a few years back, don't hold me to this number, but we were up close to thirty-six million, if not over thirty-six million. Okay? That means that by the time this state aid situation is done, one dollar of every five that we had in our budget is not there anymore. It's twenty percent. Okay? So when, when you look at this and you say, we, you know, we started this endeavor with state aid cuts, and what do we do, and how do we get money into the budget, and all these different things, no matter what we discuss here right now, at the end of the day, one out of five dollars is gone. And that's a lot of cutting, and that's a lot of people with jobs that are no longer employed. That's a lot of buildings that could be closed. That's a lot of programs that could be cut, and that's a lot of stuff. And that's what I think, in my opinion, creates this emotional vacuum, is there aren't really a lot of good answers on how to dig out of a twenty percent cut to anybody, whether it's a school, or a home, or a business, we're charged with doing it for a school. So I, I just want everyone to keep that in mind as I listen to everyone speaking. It's, it's important. It's, it's getting cut, no matter what. There's not much we can do about that. The reason, and I'm speaking for myself, the reason I'm in favor of the four percent, that brings some of that money back in, right? Not all of it. Right? For, for people who feel like we needed to make cuts, we're still gonna be down one dollar out of every five at the end of the day. This is just trying to bring some of that money back in, to, to keep the, the system growing and good in a place where people want to be. So, um, any other discussion on, on this?
I just wanna say that I feel like, for a town that cares so much about the education of students, and we've all, I, I feel like I've heard people talk to you, saying like, I went here, and now I don't wanna send my kids here. Well, maybe if we had, you know, invested in the last five years, and we'd be singing a different song and tune, maybe we wouldn't even be increasing taxes. But the fact that we constantly kept ignoring it, well, we're getting enough funding from the state, we're getting enough funding from the state. It's not always gonna be there. Things change, taxes change, grants change, and we're, like he, he was trying to say, we're trying to come up with the loss of money. And I know taxes, taxes are terrible. I don't prefer people like it. And there's no easy way to do it. I mean, if I, if I could, you know, find a better way to find, for all of us, if we find a better way to get the money that it didn't increase taxes, we would have done it.
And to that point, that's what Friday is. We're gonna talk about what we're gonna be doing to, the, the four percent is not going to fix, you know, this budget hole we're in. So Friday, they're all invited, Friday.
And that's why we did it on a Friday, because we knew we could sleep late on Saturday, so sincerely, anybody who wants to stay up late and come, we'll, I'll, you know, I'll sit there all night. Because we need ideas, and we need to think outside the box, and we need people to be involved.
Five thirty.
Starting at five thirty.
This morning, right?
Uh, you. Because, you know, because Jane won't be able to get there at five thirty.
Don't worry about coming late, because we'll be.
Uh, okay. Any other discussions on item twelve? All right, Jeff, please call roll on twelve A through F.
Ms. Falcone Schuber?
Yes.
Ms. Gulon?
Yes.
Dr. Shinlar is absent. Mr. Grunfelder?
No.
Mr. Di Stefano?
No.
Ms. Turkington?
Yes.
Ms. Colachena?
Yes.
Mr. McLean is absent. Mr. Francis?
Yes. Item thirteen personnel, um, can I ask for a motion to approve items thirteen A through W?
We'd like to make one, three-word addition to letter R. Instead of a period at the end, like a comma, and then pending H E A.
So the motion will be for items A through W, thirteen A through W, with an amendment to R, adding a comma and pending H E A.
Actually, it's gonna be thirteen A through Y.
Through Y. Through Y. Sorry about that.
One more page.
You keep tricking me at the top there. 13A through Y, with an amendment on R, comma, pending HEA. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? It's go time for my meds, sorry. Okay, any discussion on 13A through Y?
Yes, I have a, I have a question. On the letter O.
Have all of those principles been evaluated?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Okay. Jeff, please call the roll.
Ms. Falcone Schubert?
Yes.
Ms. Gulon?
Yes.
Dr. Schindler is absent. Mr. Grunfelder?
Yes.
Mr. Di Stefano?
We're gonna have to vote no.
Ms. Turkington?
Yes.
Ms. Polachina?
Yes.
Mr. McLean is absent. Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 14, which is Travel and Professional Development. I'm not seeing any letters, so we're just taking it as is. Any just, motion to approve, item 14, sorry.
I'm motioning to approve, second.
Uh, any discussion on 14? Jeff, please call the roll.
Ms. Falcone Schubert?
Yes.
Ms. Gulon?
Yes.
Dr. Schindler is absent. Mr. Grunfelder?
Yes.
Mr. Di Stefano?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Turkington?
Yes.
Ms. Polachina?
Yes.
Mr. McLean is absent. Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Item 15, Policy and Regulations. Just 15A. Is there a motion to approve 15A? Yeah, I move it. Thank you.
Second.
All right, any discussion on 15?
Yes, I have a discussion. I have a discussion item on 15. Have these policies been reviewed by the attorney to be sure that there are no conflicts with either code or law?
No, I do not. The board pays for a separate policy service, which is significantly less than attorney review. There are attorneys in, or who provide counsel in the development of the policies, and that's what the board is paying for. So, if I am asked on a specific policy, I would review it. None of these policies were given to me for review before.
So, then that leads to the question, were the policies reviewed and approved by spell's estimate?
Yes, I'm gonna answer that question. Except, I, I don't know about 24 or 15 though. The other ones, well, no, I'm sorry. They reviewed that one as well, right?
They all are.
Yeah, they all came, they all came from, yes. And this is our second read. We already approved the first read. Should be good. Any other discussion on 15? All right, Jeff, please call the roll.
Ms. Falcone Schubert?
Yes.
Ms. Gulon? Dr. Schindler is absent. Ms., Mr. Grunfelder?
Yes.
Mr. Di Stefano?
Yes.
Ms. Turkington?
Yes.
Ms. Polachina?
Yes.
Mr. McLean is absent. Mr. Francis?
Yes. Item 16 is Students and Services. I'll ask for a motion to approve item 16A through E.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Second?
I think I seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jeff, please vote. Uh, 16... Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Uh, any discussion on 16? Sorry about that. Here, Jeff, please call the roll.
Uh, 16A through E, Ms. Falcone Schubert?
Yes.
Ms. Gulon?
Yes.
Dr. Schindler is absent. Mr. Grunfelder?
Yes.
Mr. Di Stefano?
Yes.
Ms. Turkington?
Yes.
Ms. Polachina?
Yes.
Mr. McLean is absent. Mr. Francis?
Yes.
All right, item 17, Resolutions. I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve Resolutions A, B, C, and D.
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
You, any discussion?
This one's 17?
17.
Yeah, 17.
I'm gonna take A out. You have to make a motion. Oh, I want to make a motion to...
Do a separate?
You want to table it?
I want to table it, okay? Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion to table A? I think Sarah has a lot of gall quitting. You can tell I've said that, by the way. It's open discussion. I do that. All right.
And I think that when we have, when we have a board member resign, I think it should be incumbent on the board to express gratitude for her service and not just accept resignation with regret. I don't know how many years she's served on this board, and I don't know how many good things she has done. But it's simple, you know, here's your hat, you don't let the door hitch in the back on the way out.
Yes. What do they do to teachers? Yes.
Understood. All right, Jeff, so this is now voting on the motion to table A.
Motion to table 17A, moved by Mr. Di Stefano, seconded by Mr. Grunfelder. Ms. Falcone Schubert?
No.
Ms. Gulon? Dr. Schindler is absent. Mr. Grunfelder?
Yes.
Mr. Di Stefano?
Yes.
Ms. Turkington?
No.
Ms. Polachina?
No.
Mr. McLean is absent. Mr. Francis?
No.
Okay, so we're back in now on Resolution 17A through D. Is there any discussion?
So, to Jerry's point, I will acknowledge the fact that Sarah did serve a lot of units there. And she did put a lot of pride in the volunteer.
Okay. Any other discussion? Jeff, please call the roll.
17A through D, motion by Ms. Falcone Schubert, seconded by Ms. Polachina, or Ms. Gulon.
I think it's Gulon.
Want to make sure I have it? Ms. Falcone Schubert?
Yes.
Ms. Gulon?
Yes.
Dr. Schindler is absent. Mr. Grunfelder?
Yes.
Mr. Di Stefano?
A through D, but not A, sorry. B through D, but not A.
I'm standing on A.
Is that what it is? I don't want to approve, right?
No. I'm, I'm standing on A then.
Thank you. Ms. Turkington?
Yes.
Ms. Polachina?
Yes.
Mr. McLean is absent. Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Item 18 is the Sussex County Regional Cooperative. Looking for a motion here on... Hold on a second. A through G. G has multiple parts, so... A through G.
I'll move A through G, including all of the multiple parts in G.
Is there a second to that? Any discussion on the COA?
Yeah, I'll move to table that, that particular item because...
G, you mean?
Pardon me?
Yeah, which, which item?
The entire, the entire resolution, including, including G. I, as a board member, was never informed that I happened to be a member of the directors of that COA. We were also questioning what liability we may have as individual board members, and we were assured that the insurance managers would come in to review that with us. That hasn't happened yet, so I don't see how I can possibly approve those things without knowing where I stand.
So, there's a motion from Jerry to table item 18. Is there a second? Motion does not. So, we're back in discussion on 18A through D. Any discussion? Jeff?
Ms. Falcone Schubert?
Yes.
Ms. Gulon?
Yes.
Dr. Schindler is absent. Mr. Grunfelder?
No.
Mr. Di Stefano?
Yes.
Ms. Turkington?
Yes.
Ms. Polachina?
Yes.
Mr. McLean is absent. Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Okay, item 19 is the adjournment, where we ask for a motion to adjourn. I want to thank everybody for coming. Appreciate it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
We have an addendum?
Oh, I'm sorry. We do. Good thing you're here. We do have an addendum, and that will be addendum items A through D.
I'll move the addendum.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the addendum? Okay, Jeff, please call the roll.
Ms. Falcone Schubert?
Yes.
Ms. Gulon?
Yes.
Dr. Schindler is absent. Mr. Grunfelder?
No.
Mr. Di Stefano?
Yes.
Ms. Turkington?
Yes.
Ms. Polachina?
Yes.
Mr. McLean is absent. Mr. Francis?
Yes.
And I'm gonna thank everybody for coming again. And if there's a motion to adjourn.
Yes. I guess I'm not too comments. No, we don't, we don't, we don't do that anymore.
Still a board?
Yeah, we are.
So, we have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.